And I'll just keep the rest of them on?
Sure.
Hello, okay, is he hearing that?
Yeah.
Sounds a lot better. Okay. Please speed to the microphone located at podium. Say your name and address if you have a petition or other information pertaining to your subject. Please move that into the city sector. Say all council members, the council of the session, or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council will settle the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to say. If personal attacks on council members, members of the city staff will be allowed. The mayor and/or city council members may all point the words to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to pursue the attack, any official staff member and a meeting. All of us meeting here will have your information. Uh, the honor, Yankee. Yankee.
Blessings are God, our Lord and His angels. Peace beyond the law. Let us pray to the Lord. Christ our, Christ our Father said, ask what you receive is to be your fine and not to be your evil. He also said, that if two of you are listening about concerning anything that they ask, should we go unto them as I followed him. For we're two and three of God's children together in my name, I am there in the business of this. Leader, President, and the House of Lords, among us. May the Holy Spirit dwell in the hearts of everyone here, so that we may celebrate and remember this community to truth. May the Holy Spirit guide us among truth and goodness come to the good of this community. Yes, this is the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. May the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ be with our Godfather, the great and the good and most dear people of all heaven and earth.
Where do we stand?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and every government, which exists in it. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the left, we have the city. Texas, according to the state, under God, equal and indivisible.
This is very good.
Mayor, we have a form and the notice was posted at 2:00 P.M. on July 12, 2019.
Okay. Uh, we need to have a reservation about today and I go to speak to this beautiful board. It's the same episode, 2017, 2019. And, uh, where's the post in the room here? Thank you very much. I mean, I had done a lot of hard work, uh, at the recycling center, but, oh, sorry. I believe in the credit of the city with, uh, at the recycling and also, uh, city even, oh, how beautiful. So that, uh, we're just, that's all, very, uh, thank you. City, uh, Mayor, for your work, uh, uh, we're gonna recognize the street problem today, but they, uh, weren't able to make it. So we're resetting this to next, uh, next meeting. Uh, just a quick highlight on the different, uh, in the soil, uh, 4015. And I'll, uh, give more information than that, it was a big hit for eight. City manager.
Mayor, don't have a report under city staff updates. We have the, um, third quarter report. We have a third quarter report, uh, rather than the expense report. Now, in your package, you'll see, um, the summary from the third quarter as of June 30th, 2019. General fund revenues totaled $3,674,753, or 77% of the total budgeted revenue. City received tax in the amount of $414,987 in the third quarter and has received 74% of the budget. Third quarter property tax collections totaled $98,016 and has received 97% of the budget. Uh, the note here is the sales tax and property tax are by far the two largest sources of revenue for the general fund, totaling 73% of all budgeted revenue. And expenditures for the third quarter, employee expenses totaled $630,840. Operating expenses were $408,400 for a total of $1,63,780. We're at 59% of our fiscal year budget. And then for the, um, water solid waste sanitation fund, actually, that's the water, wastewater sanitation fund. Water revenues the third quarter totaled $326,600, or 70% of total budgeted revenues. Water expenditures the third quarter totaled $351,143, or 58% of the budget. Wastewater revenues the third quarter totaled $601,938, or 70% of total budgeted revenues. And wastewater expenses for the third quarter were $336,687, or 58%. Sanitation revenues the third quarter totaled $1532,311, uh, or 78% of our budget. Sanitation expenses totaled $1296,125, or 66% of the budget. City billing expenditures totaled $117,690 in the third quarter. The airport fund revenues the third quarter totaled $419,490, or 74% of total budgeted revenue. Total expenditures for the third quarter totaled $452,197, or 80% of the budget. Groundies payments were issued in January totaled $13,117. Uh, those are the payments received as of June 30th, 2019. For the gas department, revenues the third quarter totaled $17,430, or 90% of the total budgeted revenues. The expenditures for the department totaled $19,209, or 65% of the budget. The interest and sinking funds revenue, which comes from the INS portion of the property taxes, the debt and the water sewer fund. Revenues for the second quarter totaled $72,058 from all property taxes. City debt payments are due in March 11th, September 2019, so we'll have, uh, another payment coming up in the coming months. Of course, the payment is made from the sinking funds and the remainder from the water wastewater enterprise side. March 7th, February 2nd, total grant payments were $385,785. $245,994 received from the water sewer enterprise funds. And $139,791 from the sinking funds. Next, debt payment total will be $117,412 to be paid for both water sewer enterprise fund and the interest and sinking fund in the way off for the September of the seventh. Hotel motel tax collection, um, third quarter, the note on here is that, um, we don't typically receive these funds, um, in a time of manner to our third quarter. So the third quarter financials are showing $218. Collectives the third quarter totaled $428,112, or 68% of the total budgeted revenues. Expenditures totaled $289,119, or 56% of the budget. On the spreadsheets, you can see the breakdown for the period. Again, the number of total current budget is $5137,830. Period activity for the third quarter was $1,102,936. For a total fiscal year of $3,685,119, um, 72% of the budget. That was revenues. Expenses, total expenditures for the budget was $5137,31. Third quarter activity is $994,794. For total fiscal year expenditures is $2910,336, or 57% of the budget. The water based sanitation fund, um, revenues under the budget is $4166,503. Budgeted expenses were $4166,503. Period for the third quarter, one million for revenues was $109,25. And expenses are $865,746, um, which is 50% of our budget. Um, expenses is 70% of our budget for revenues. Airport fund. Budget totals for expenditures, revenues and expenditures are $564,900. Third quarter activity for revenues in the airport was $114,143. And airport value expenditures were $155,527. Those numbers are 74% of our revenue budget and 80% of our expenditures budget. Under hotel motel funds, we've, uh, budgeted $625 for revenues, $625 for expenditures. Third quarter activity was $193,399 in revenues. And $114,416 expenses. It was 74% 68% of our budget revenues and 56% of our budget expenditures. Gas department. Budget revenues and expenses are $1731,500. Activities for the third quarter were $782,280 in revenue. $335,595 in expenditures, representing 98% of our budget revenue and 63% of our budget expenditures. Interest and sinking funds, $146,918 of our budget revenues and expenditures. Third quarter activities for revenues $1,263. And expenditures were $128,79, representing 130% of our budget revenues and 80% of our expenditures. Questions?
So, I, relative to the hotel motel tax collections, I noticed last night in the draft fiscal year 1920 budget that we received, it shows a projection for this year of $470,000. Uh, yet our budget this year of projection was $625,000. Can you tell me why that projection is so low?
Um, the projected end of the year tables that were left by the finance director gave those numbers. Um, assuming as all of the statements and sequels are written filed, we'll have a better number.
Go over to environmental services. Go ahead and move over to, uh, environmental services, I think you did it.
So I have moved on, right, for since of fiscal year of 2018. And thus, we started collecting our signatures out of the recycling center. And these are our totals for out farm residents and other residents and, uh, monthly average for each. And then I have a date for this fiscal year 2019. For June 2019 and the full for out farm residents and others outside of the county. And then the monthly average. On page three, um, this is for the fiscal year 2018. And these were the total drop, drop offs from July to September. For all the schedules we take. And that's page four as well. Uh, page five is, uh, fiscal year 2019. Up to June and the drop offs for made paper newspaper, plastic cardboard. Page six, aluminum glass, tin and brush. Page seven, um, scrap metal drop offs and woofie and the usual. Um, page eight, uh, currently all positions are filled. Um, and a plan of recycling that was done last year, November 36th. Uh, currently 9.79 US tons. We also did a tire recycling and we recycle 8.03 US tons. 357 passenger tires and certainly safe truck tires. Um, we currently have some tires and we're just waiting for another recycle. So, um, I'll have the next update for later. Um, the following is the city of Alpine landfill numbers. So, these are the construction demolition numbers, municipal solid waste. And it starts on September to September, September 1st to September 12th. Uh, page nine. Um, this graph shows what they received up today in the remaining for each for construction demolition and municipal solid waste. The bottom graph on page nine that is showing all recyclables from the recycling center and the landfill. They received cardboard and brush. So they're all added up together. We have plastic and tin. Page ten, aluminum made paper, hardware, scrap metal. And then page eleven is brush. And the last graph is total of, um, all recyclables up to date. Totally 394 and, and 69 US tons.
Now Lena, can you go back to page eight, please? I'm just trying to understand capacity. And help me understand the chart. It says, construction demolition, municipal solid waste, total capacity 7,300 tons.
That's, that's per year.
I'm sorry?
That's per year.
That's per year. If I add up CND and MSW, it's significantly greater than 7,300 tons. So, I'm just trying to understand where we are in capacity. My understanding, we were at the limits, even with all the great work and some phenomenal work at the recycling center, nearly 400 tons. That doesn't even come close to offsetting our maximum 7,300 tons.
Um, on page nine, the numbers they send me of their total, I add them to those graphs. It shows that we have 1,700 left. And, uh, for CND and 1,400 left for municipal solid waste.
So it's 7,300 tons for each.
For each, yes.
So a total of 14,600 tons. Okay, so, given that, we're right on the hairy edge. You know, because we still got July, August, those are our last two months, right? And we're consuming, you know, right now about 600 tons per month for each.
Per month, 500 or 600?
Yeah, so what happens if we get to the middle of August and we hit our 7,300 tons each?
I think they will have to adjust getting closer to that date, right? Because I think they were with their, with each month, kind of leaving a window. I think they are trying to do that and I think they, they shift some stuff to force off the, so that way they will call.
So, what I hear you saying is TDS manages to make sure we stay within the limit. And you know what their priority is? Uh, I presume it's residents get preferential treatment.
Yes.
Okay, and that's gotta be for the waste hauling we all dump out in the garbage.
Yeah, the municipal solid waste and these years.
And then, I presume that takes priority over construction and demo.
And, and they have a different kid for that, so they, they, they're separate cells.
Okay, and when we hit that limit, then what happens? So if someone wants to use our dump, then they have to go somewhere else.
Um, I can follow up on that if you want to. I can ask John and see what he's gonna do within these months and I can get through and break that.
Okay, 'cause it, it, it'll just be helpful to understand. I don't think we ever want to be in a situation where residents of Alpine have to haul their trash somewhere else because someone else consumed our limit that's outside of city limits.
I'll ask him that, but I would think, I would think they would give preference. And if it's over other, other communities would have to ship it somewhere else. And things for that, but I'll ask and I'll, I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
The, the bulky items, I'm assuming that they refer to the chairs and cupboards and shelves and mattresses and anything that's also non-appliance. Going to that big square, um, container with two guys out there in the, uh, center. Is, before getting out to the public about that being available and it's there and it's for most type of items? In order to sort of increase people dumping stuff, like to refer things to that?
Yeah, we, we haven't made it available because it's not like a service key of those. It's something that it just happened to be, we just had to officially decide with the city and TDS if they want to do that. I don't think it's in their contract right now, but if they do it as a, as a, a service, but it's not, they should, they don't have to, I guess. But, uh, that's why I haven't promoted it on the radio or somewhere, because it's not really something we are, uh, doing right now. We, it's there, but it's, they don't really wanna stay there with it.
Somebody else comes in and takes it out?
We decided on, uh, what amongst the trash picker was gonna be above trash.
Um, I don't know that, but I think it's in the contract, it's to be every quarter of the year, it's four times a year. So they pick the first Monday of the month, but I can follow up and I can find out how they decided that.
Yeah, I've had a lot of residents asking why it would be in January and I guess in October, they would rather.
It's, uh, January, so it's a winter, spring, a summer and a fall. Kinda like when we board, you know, you.
I mean, I did a lot of people saying that it would be better, I guess, during the summer because they are, um.
Like more often in the summer?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'd like the new employees at the recycling center, super friendly. They're here? There's the list over there. How about block?
Uh, can you, can you make it in the background?
Okay. Real simple frame, very helpful. Thank you. Okay, all the areas we have none. And we'll do orders that we set the agenda. Minutes actually for the bar dinner, for order funnels, etc. Notice to the public, the following items are routine administrative nature. The council will defer to the background and support material upon each item and where it has been discussed previously. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member. In this event, that item or items will immediately be based on individual consideration. And it's only sequence after the items are not requiring separate discussion that been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote. City manager.
Mayor, we have, they will approve the minutes in city council meeting July 2nd, 2019.
Councilor, can I move please?
I'm going to motion to approve the minutes. Um, for January, for July 2nd, 2019.
Third second. Okay, motion, second, any session. All the motions, page right hand. Let's say, I mean, I guess motion same time, motion carries. Move on to the item seven, information for the session items. And, as conceived.
Yes, sir, so the, uh, the first item, uh, we have up is the Parks Master Plan. Uh, I think council is aware that, uh, the Parks Master Plan work has been underway for a number of months. Under, uh, two actions, one, the, uh, Parks Advisory Board, uh, and as well as, uh, KSA Climate Associates. And, uh, Vicky Carrasco and Kirsten Camudi have been leading that activity. Uh, Kirsten cannot be here this evening, uh, but we do have, uh, a, Marcy's gonna be here tonight to kinda walk us through that. I thought it was worthwhile for the, the council to get some insight about this plan, just so everyone has a perspective. It's a 255-page report. Uh, it, on page 79 are 33 pages of recommendations. There's an implementation plan that starts on page 113, uh, and the appendix starts on page 120. So I have to report his appendices with all the elements to go through it. I wanted to make sure council had an opportunity to hear directly from the Parks Board tonight. And I know Marcy's got a couple slides to show, so that's the reason it's on the agenda. Uh, my expectation is, uh, given it's the length of it, we've got a couple weeks before the next city council meeting, that we would come back at our August 6th meeting and, uh, discuss and hopefully approve the plan at that time. So that, Marcy?
Yes. Hello? Is it on? Yes. Hi. Good evening, all. Mayor, councilmember, city man, everyone. I am Marcy Tucktad, just trying to get technology to work here. Well, that'll do. Sorry to get you to the other two points below it, but I'm gonna try to stand out of the way. Um, as represented, or as councilmember Stevens said, this is just gonna be a brief introduction. The document, which most all of us on the Parks and, uh, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board have read multiple times at this. multiple times at this point, is very long, but at least half of it is appendices, so that's good. On to... Okay, I'm not going to read this whole slide, but wanted to point out some key steps that have led up to hopeful council approval for the final Parks and Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan from 2019 to 2030. So, the first one, and actually the date is incorrect, I went back and checked, it was actually October of 18, the council approved the consultants for the plan. There was a series of public engagement proceedings that lasted from February through mid-May of 2018, uh, sorry, 2019. And then, on April 4th of 19 of this year, there was a joint, as you all know, there was a joint city council and Parks Advisory Board meeting, where council approved the extension of the timeline due to some property and deed research complications that had been brought up by the consultant at that point. And the Parks Advisory Board, as I alluded to, has had several workshop meetings, two formal ones, to review and go through page by page, section by section, the full draft. And so, on June 19th, at our regular Parks Board meeting, we approved the plan with the amendments that I believe you all have as part of your packet, which include adding specific language on the $215,000 dedicated towards the Trail Improvement Funds, and language to support that, as well as other amendments noted in there. So, going forward, we are obviously today presenting to you the introduction to this plan, and hopefully, a future meeting anticipated to be at your August 6th meeting, we hope that council will approve the final plan. Whatever date council decides to approve the plan and formally adopt it as a city, making it the official Parks Plan for the city, the plan will be sent to Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, which is the state agency, obviously, for parks, and they will review it and approve it within the 30-day period, and file it with their agency. And at that point, the City of Alpine is eligible for grant monies through that agency, which is one of the largest grant funders for parks improvements. Not the only, but one of the largest. And I would also like to point out that the draft plan that you all have now does include some of the recommendations that the Parks Board put into our budget recommendations for the fiscal 2020 budget that you all are about to embark on. Hopefully, you all have seen kind of a summarized list of that, that was discussed at our May meeting, and sent out. I sent mine directly to Councilmember Stevens. I'm hoping that your representatives on the board have sent you such, if not, it can be made available to you. It was in our May minutes from our Parks Board meeting, so. Anyway, that's also something to consider as you read. The plan is that it, some of the recommendations are tied to our budget requests for the Parks and Recreation Budget for fiscal year 20. Okay. Next. Okay. And I'm not, I'm not gonna read all of the table of contents to you either, but, uh, so, if you feel like you don't want to read, you know, the first half of the document, line by line, which I encourage you to, it's not a terrible read at this point, it's pretty good now, um, I would suggest that you read the key sections, which include the executive summary, the park standards, and what they mean, basically, to the plan, which is why we are striving to do some of the things that we are trying to do, because of industry standards. The public engagement portion, which I hope that a lot of you were able to attend, and that public engagement, um, portion is summarized in the document itself, and then in the appendix, section D, that's where all of the raw data is. So, it's summarized in the document itself, and then you can look at every single post-it note comment in the last half of the document. And then, as, as Councilmember Stevens pointed out, the recommendations and the implementation chapters, the last two chapters, are the most important parts. Those are the meat and potatoes of what the plan is trying to say. So, that's my overall of the 250-plus-page document that you have. Are there any questions for me, at this point, as the advisory board representative this evening? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I really wanna commend the Parks Advisory Board for their commitment to this project, as well as the consultant. The public engagement process that they undertook for this really made this open to everyone from all walks of life and all interests, including individual meetings with different groups. I think that that level of transparency is really to be commended. So, thank you, Marcy and Chris, for your, your commitment to it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
No, I just wanted to, uh, also express my puros to the Parks Advisory Board, as well as Michael Wright and Dick Carrasco. They've done a heck of a good job, all the information they were able to acquire, but most important, it's with public input.
Yes.
People out there want in the plan.
Yes, we, we gave about three months and multiple versions of public input opportunity. I hope that everybody here in the room had an opportunity to weigh in on that. It should, it, it is a representation of the full Alpine community, as best we could get everybody involved. Great, thank you.
So, next on the list is, they did a discussion, to get some feedback about the contract that was put in place last December with Park Hill, Smith, and Cooper, for a study, preliminary design, pump design bidding and negotiation phase, construction phase for wastewater treatment plant that was signed last December. And it looks like we're getting some new data here. And, uh, so, just to understand, we spent, it's not 251,000, it's 300,000. I presume the money is spent, 'cause it was a lump sum. And, uh, I know the Texas Water Development Board has a draft report out, that they are looking for, for comments back. Right now, their draft usage plan says that we can apply for a loan up to $5.3 million. The current draft plan says it's not eligible for loan forgiveness, so just to understand where...
Well, this, um, this particular contract that we signed with Park Hill, Smith, and Cooper was intended for an application for a portion of the funds for the treatment plant. In the packet you just received was the letter that was sent to the city, indicating that we had an October 5th deadline to submit that application. Part of that process included procuring the engineer in time to, for that, to seal off on that application. You can see from these two sheets here, the ones on top, the 2020 draft IUP is out, and Alpine has ranked 41 on it for, specifically for the wastewater treatment plant. In requesting 2.25674, $2,556,784 for wastewater treatment plant improvements. Last year, when the IUP came out, Alpine was ranked 97, so we're moving up on the list, but we're still not ranked high enough to receive any loan forgiveness funds, as well as the cost affordability factor, based on the number of usage of our sewer system, also hurt us in the points area in moving up higher for disadvantaged funds. So, where we're at, or this particular contract, the council did approve on September 7th, the RFQ to go out to procure that engineer, and you've got a copy of that RFQ that went out, also an email in there indicating that there was a lapse in the publication of it, which led to us not getting the award or the contract signed in time by the engineer. We did go ahead and sign the contract under TWDB guidelines. This procurement process is good for five years, and Park Hill, Smith, and Cooper is currently working under this contract for an application for loan forgiveness from Water Development Board, specifically for our treatment plant. We did submit a project information form for the drinking water side of it. Do you remember from the last meeting, we discussed we had submitted for a little over $5 million? We did not rank high enough in that for disadvantaged funds, even though we did have some areas that were eligible for disadvantaged funds. The priority right now, while we do have issues with both water and wastewater, the treatment plant is in desperate need of improvements right away. So, while the scope of this project, here lists, the lack of a needs assessment has not been done for an asset management program. Due to the age of the existing system components are not functioning efficiently to handle the existing needs of the city, the project includes rehabilitation of two lift stations, security rehabilitation of pumps, replacing the chemical system at the treatment plant, increasing the capacity of the reclaiming water storage tank, repairing and replacing solar panels, treatment plant, and installing new mechanical screen, and belt press, and gear box, and airator, as well as addressing the ponds and oxidation, oxidation ditches. So, some of these items came up on a TCQ violation, in which there was enforcement action, and the city paid a fine back in January of 30, I'd say it was $38,000. And so, we'll have to wait to see when the final, when the final plan comes out, this is just off the draft, to see if we do move up, and to see what the availability of those funds are. I estimate that we will be eligible for some green funds on here to address some of the, what they consider green portions of the application, that would be eligible for some loan forgiveness, but the bulk of the project is not going to be covered. So, that, 2.25 includes all those items. Once we get the invitation to apply, then the engineer will kick in through this same contract, and come out and start assessing, hopefully, the needs assessment will be far along, far enough along that they'll be able to identify the priority projects, which in talking to the treatment plant, they feel is the mechanical bar screen, the belt press, and the aerators. Because of the permit, the issue with the permit compliance, a decision will have to be made whether or not we rehab the ponds, and put the oxidation ditch completely offline, or if we put the pond offline and bring back the oxidation ditches. But we can't have both not being used, so a decision will have to be made at that point, and quite honestly, it's gonna come down to whichever one is cheaper for us to do, in order for us to be in compliance with our permit. So, while this amount is at 2.2 for all these items, it may be less, in order to lessen the debt portion that the city will need to take out to bring the rest of those main functioning items back online. If you'll recall, several weeks ago, we discussed some of the issues at the treatment plant, where the guys were having to be out there 24/7 because one of the pumps on the RAS pit had gone down, and they were having to switch it off and on manually. Every three or four hours, someone had to go turn it on, and then they had to turn it off, and that went on 24/7 for about two and a half weeks. The issue at that point was the electrical panel was outdated, they couldn't get a replacement, and they had to send for it to be refabricated. That was installed last week, and not done with, it's still working. So, they were able to get a little bit of reprieve from that. So, this particular contract, we have not paid anything out to Park Hill, Smith, and Cooper on it, underwater development board. They don't get paid until we get a contract and, an application submitted, approved, and funded.
So, that's the good news. We didn't get, we haven't get any money out there, is what I remember. And they won't get paid, so they do it on the hope that it will happen?
Yes.
A little bit interesting. Can you help us, help us understand a little bit the sequence, Jessica? So, we approved this back in the August timeframe, and it said to have, we had to submit it by October 5th, but we didn't sign the contract with Park Hill, Smith, and Cooper till December. It doesn't look like there was any chance of us having a completed application. What am I missing?
Um, well, we went through the process, and the procurement is good for five years, so rather than just disregarding the work that was there, occasionally, Water Development Board will have some funds left over that they open up for competition, and by having the engineer's contract already signed, and having them procured, would have put us kind of in a position that if that opportunity had arisen, we would have been able to utilize their services to submit that application. That, that actually did come up. There were some EDA funds that were available, they did submit that application, but we didn't score high enough to get any of the leftover EDA funds.
Looking forward, particularly as we get into the budget discussion, and I don't wanna go through the details now, but the CIP seems to have mixed elements. Do you believe the CIP plan for next year has sufficient dollars in it to cover the issues? Because if we don't get funding from the Texas Water Development Board, we have things we need to go do. And, it said we'll cover that when we get in the budget dialogue. It looks like we already have a significant deficit issue going into the next fiscal year. I added up, just budget-wise, about a half a million dollar deficit separate from CIP, so it sounds like we've got some real decisions we're gonna have to make. Thank you. I have nothing else on this. See, I'm gonna see this. I'm sorry, I've got, I've got items here, I'm shooting up here. Sorry, Mayor, I got a digital agenda that's different than the hard copy agenda. Okay. So, I'm trying to work my way through this. Okay, the next one is all about an update on where we are on our contract with Park Hill, Smith, and Cooper, that we approved in January, and the, by KSA, for the road assessment, and where are we on our plan, and it looks like we're just handed another piece of paper to look at here.
So, what you have there is the timeline put together for the needs assessment for the water and wastewater system that Park Hill, Smith, and Cooper is expecting. As I discussed in the last meeting, they are in the mapping phase, and they're expected to have that done with the submission of the, of those maps by the end of the month. Then they'll start working on the actual capital improvement process after that. There's one, the, the issue with the mapping is that the city doesn't have any current maps. They reached out to former engineers for the city to try to acquire whatever mapping that they had electronically to convert, and now they're, they were in the process of tying all the pieces together, and just confirming where those lines are. So, remember, this needs assessment is water and wastewater.
Yep.
And so, once those maps are complete, and they're given to the utilities department to kind of go over and review, and I guess, sign off on those, then they'll get into the actual capital improvement. So, as you can see from their timeline, they're looking at 7:29, the, the supplemental of the electronic maps, with the review meeting on August 1st. And then, the next phase will start on actually putting the, the structure together for the capital improvement plan, which is analyzing the structure, identifying the projects, and then submitting the remainder portions of that project.
Who has the wherewithal in the city to understand the electronic maps and GIS? I've raised this before. Who was our expert on that that says, here's the digital image, now the city has, knows something to go do with it?
Well, from the, from an actual technology standpoint, we don't have anyone that does GIS mapping. But we do have enough people within the water department to be able to identify maybe this is not, this was an eight inch, this is a six inch, or a twelve inch, that run through different portions of the city, as well as identifying where known valve boxes are and know fire hydrants are. One of the things that we've been working on is trying to find low-cost training for employees to take on GIS mapping. I've got one candidate, and I'm waiting for them to confirm. Yes, Geo. So we do have an opportunity to actually send someone or have someone take some of the GIS mapping and use ESRI to be able to up with them and then maintain them in the future. I understand the gas department has someone that is actual GIS savvy, and I think Randy's here. And they're using, they're already using GIS in their department. So the potential is there, and the mapping will be made available to us in various electronic formats depending on how we decide to proceed in the future.
Yeah, having grown up in this world and understand it fairly well, not only from a management standpoint, from a technology standpoint, you really need to get someone on board who understands the architecture for the city. There is no one right now that has the capacity. I'm meeting with Geo tomorrow with someone from the outside. Geo invited me in for our discussion. Because of my background, this is going to be a huge element. My biggest fear and concern will be we're getting company X, company Y, company Z, and I can assure you, if they're not integrated to talk, think about how they're going to talk back and forth, we're going to end up with gobbledygook. We are behind on this significantly.
And we, and I have to discuss that with both of the firms to have their final projects submitted in multiple electronic formats, AutoCAD, GIS, and then regular electronic formats, so that depending on how we move forward in the future, they'll be compatible.
I just didn't see anything for in the draft budget we got last night. So I just, we'll talk about that when we get to the budget. I just didn't see it. Okay? Which gives me great pause for concern. So looking at that, then going on to the second page, which is what this is all about, roads. What's our road plan?
So from their project timeline, and I had them update this as of last Friday, they're still doing data entry into their analysis, but actually this week sometime, we should start seeing some feedback from them on road classifications. One of their issues in talking to the consultant two weeks ago is that because we have not updated our street plan in so long, the classifications are not matching what was in that last plan. Based on transportation standards and widths of roads, he says you've got some roads here that are too small that are tagged as thoroughfares. He says they probably need to be reclassified based on distance and width to determine how we move forward with them. And then again, at some point here within the next two weeks, the two consultants will be combining or overlapping their mapping so that the street study will be able to reflect the priority of the streets, but as well as the infrastructure that will be needed underneath.
So given what you know now, when do you expect we'll have a list of roads and a priority board? And on the last meeting you had mentioned, we know there are roads that don't have infrastructure underneath them. We know they're bad. I thought I heard that some of those priorities get put in place now.
So from the consultants, we're expecting that between the 21st and 23rd of July. Being where we're at today, this Friday, I should have an update from them based on the list of roads that the street department provided to them as where they'd like to start working, to see which ones of those could be cleared. They're currently out on Country Club Estates. They've done some lane of some base, some compaction out there, and they're spraying some Amalian. And they're kind of using that as kind of a training ground for the new employees to get them adjusted to the equipment. We did bring in two contracted employees. There are previously, previous retired employees that have come in and agreed to also not just operate the equipment, but to train the new employees on them. Eddie's next target, I'm going to get this wrong, up there off of Brown, there's one block that's just horrible.
Yep.
They had gone in and kind of packed it with base, but the last rains washed it away. So he's saying, once we get done out there and he's comfortable with the guys, they'll start milling that street. One of the contractors can only work 50 hours a month, so then when he comes back after his short little break, he'll be, and they'll be out there kind of working on these shorter sections of the streets that are really bad.
So I know that street well. It's in my ward. I drove over and coming down here tonight. So that's the first project you know worked on.
Jode.
Yep, I did. It's right where the neighborhood garden is.
Yes.
Yes. So Dan and Alexa there will very much appreciate that, as well as everyone who buys fresh produce. Okay? All I have on that subject.
Any more to contractors? Park Hill Smith and Cooper's on the needs assessment, and KSA Consultants is on the street study. Yes, one of the retirees.
Who came back?
Oh, Estelle Luis and Steve.
Steve here.
So I made it, but Steve's last name.
Any more questions? Okay. Item D, ask for seats. So item D, you know, as we all recall, I was, I proposed a resolution 2019-0603 regarding the disannexation of property requested by the property owners on Old Marathon Road. As we discussed in the last meeting, in order to affect a deannexation or disannexation, we would have to have a disannexation of all the property that came in at that same annexation activity. Before initiating any action, I had asked if you, as a city manager, would go find out and meet with the property owners and find out, could we resolve the issues that they had with regard to lack of police, lack of roads, lack of emergency services, and lack of trash collection? So the purpose behind this agenda was to get some feedback about whether or not that has happened yet or not.
I have not met with the individual residents. I did talk with the police department and 911 about the police issue. Looking at the annexation map, the road itself is a county road. We annexed up to the property lines. We did not annex the road.
Okay.
And I believe in talking to Captain LaSoya today, he's verifying with AT&amp;T on where those calls or how those calls are directed. There's always an issue when someone calls 911 from a cell phone because it'll ping off of a local tower. And if that tower's located in the county, it directs it to the county and not to the police department. And it's an issue, all in all 911 areas, based with people using cell phones in that it pings off of the tower, not necessarily the exact location.
I can assure you that is not the case. They are calling from line lines. Because they have reported to me, and you can go back and track, specifically Randy Madden is the one you want to talk to. Randy is the one that initiated the action. They are still intent on wanting to move forward because when they call, the city says it's the county, the county says it's the city, they play ping pong, and no one responds.
Darrell said it would take a couple of days for him to get some information back from AT&amp;T, but I didn't have any names to give him to be able to look up. He asked me, do you have a specific address or names, then they can go back in their database and try to track the 911 calls. But with that name I can give him, that might help him, could get his search a little bit to do that. The issue with the trash collection is another one. In talking to John, he says there are dumpsters out there. They may look at relocating them or adding more if it's needed, but they are receiving trash service. From what John said.
Okay, my suggestion, give Randy a call. All you have to do is send an email and say, who is it? Okay? We've had this on the agenda for some time, so thank you for following up with Darrell. You'll find in the logs going back and forth, because I said they've gone back and forth on it.
And that was MADVEN?
MADVEN. If you want to go meet with them, they own Subway. You just go knock on the door.
They own Subway?
They own Subway. You just go knock on the door and say, hey, I'm there.
Are they calling from Subway, or they're calling from?
They're calling from their property. I just have to see them at Subway because I know they have to run that business. But they all live on Loop Road, you know?
On Loop Road in Maryland?
I'm sorry, on Old Marathon Road.
I will pass that information on then.
But I suggest you personally call Randy.
Do you have a number for him?
I will give it to you in email. I don't want to blast his number like mine is everywhere. I don't think, not sure he appreciates his personal number going out.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, sir. Okay, let's go to E. So moving on to E. Present and discuss the preliminary 2019-20 city budget and provide updates relative to the key milestones that we approved back in May. I have a couple of comments leading into this. There are four documents that are critically important for us as council and you as we think about the budget for the next fiscal year. Setting aside the city charter, which says we have to have a draft budget 45 days prior to the expenditure or the conclusion of this fiscal year, which would say by the, by the middle of August, which we only have one council meeting left before that occurs. But the other four documents are the budget policy, which you sent us a copy, was included in our package that we approved last year as three items. First, as we set the parameters and priorities at the beginning of the budget cycle, we adopt an annual budget preparation and adoption calendar, and it should include three fiscal forecasts to assess long-term financial implications of current and proposed policies, programs, assumptions, and develop the appropriate strategies to achieve the council's goals. The second document is the annual plan that we approved last year. And since I keep things, I brought mine out, refreshed, and it provided a balance last year of $12.87 million, a 2.4% increase over the previous year. The general fund is a little over $5 million. It had non-departmental expenses of $649,000. That's an important number that will come up again in a minute. In addition, it provided performance measures in each department, major accomplishments from the year before. That would have been the fiscal year '17, '18 budget, as well as goals and objectives for the last budget. And just as a reminder, I know I've raised this probably too many times, the goals and objectives for the planned budget in the street department alone were 36 blocks of resurfacing. That's dig up, do again. It also included the capital improvement plan. The third document is our calendar. And in the calendar, we have actions to do that lead up to getting a budget approved. We should talk about budget amendments, which we have not yet seen, and identify challenges and priorities to the council from your perspective. And then I know on the agenda tonight, we have approval of the chart of accounts, which certainly is light reading for those who are interested to get put to sleep. We have to talk about the fund balance report. We have to talk about budget amendments, and then the preliminary budget. I reviewed the preliminary budget that we all received after 5 o'clock last night. I would note that in the past, we've been chided for information not coming out before the meeting. It's a little disconcerting to get over 50 pages of a spreadsheet with no supporting information. The document shows nothing on reserves. It shows nothing on city debt and our debt service requirements, and it does not even include a total city budget unless I missed that point. It shows non-departmental expenses jumping from $650,000 to $860,000, a 51% increase. Plus, my math, quickly as I did it, shows about a half a million dollar deficit, and there are serious shortcomings in it. There are no goals and objectives. There are no list of accomplishments. In some cases, it shows salary expenditures, not salary increases, but salary expenditures in departments, normally up as much as 33% over last year's budget, and up to 67% over the current year budget. There is no capital improvement plan for roads at all. And there is no real capital improvement plan for us to work our way through. And so, and I get concerned based upon what we've talked about before, there's nothing contemplated in the budget from a strategy standpoint about what we might need to consider over the next two to three years, give or maxing out on our dump, which can take 14,600 tons a year, and looks like we approach that every month. So I'm looking forward to walking through the details of the document that we got last night, and I suspect this is going to be a long part of the meeting because without a budget that we can talk about, it will be difficult for us to be able to come back at our next city council meeting and take action because we've got a lot of work to do. So with that, I will turn the discussion over to you, city manager.
Okay, so I guess you fairly recapped the budget policy that was adopted last year. And I'm not going to rehash the comments from the previous meeting in regards to the role and participation of the finance department in this process. Fund balance report had not been done, and so I did work on that last week. So the second page of what you received yesterday is the fund balance report. Starting with the first column, as of 9:30, our 9:30 financials that were prepared by our auditor shows you what our unrestricted fund balance is. $923,204 in the general fund, $839,355 in the hot fund, $2,652,787 in the water, wastewater, and sanitation fund, $76,075 in the airport fund, and gas of $766,068. I'm going to take you all the way to the bright, down to the actual cash balances and the accounts. So there's only $601 in our general fund reserve. The general fund checking account has $867,11. There's $890,419 in our hot fund checking account. Water and wastewater fund has $1,919,003. Airport fund has $137,837. And the gas fund has $1,468,341. Based on the actual end-of-year projections that were left by the finance director, you see those numbers in that second column, which gives us a total projected fund balance at the end of the year, the general fund of $1,543,668, $782,452 in the hot fund, $3,425,989 in the water, wastewater, and sewer sanitation fund, $72,540 in the airport fund, and $995,336 in the gas fund. Our budget policy requires at some point that we reserve 25% of each of the funds, which is $1,282,702 for the general fund, $154,431 in the hot fund, $1,186,340 for water and wastewater, $156,508 for airport, $465,446 in the gas fund. Those numbers are based on three months of expenditures. So if... are based on three months of expenditures. So if your total expenditures is a million dollars, then your reserve amount, I mean, I'm just using round numbers, then your reserve amount should basically be $250,000.
I'm sorry, on that, page seven of our budget for this year very specifically talks about reserve funds. And while I agree, we council adopted a strategy getting down, getting to the 25%, that is not what we allocated for that in this year's budget. So what's the reconciliation between what we allocated and what you're talking about right now?
Get into that.
Okay.
Our budget policy also requires a 3% contingency. So you'll notice in the spreadsheet, there's nothing transferred in from fund balance, and there's nothing transferred in on contingency. The budget policy does give us five years to work up to that 25%. The last column there would be the remaining unrestricted fund balance. So the direction needed from council at this point is the decision as to how much to set aside of each of those fund balances into reserves to transfer into this year. And then that will take care of a lot of the deficits that we have. Or we can allocate it all, stick to a very skinny diet this year when it comes to budget, and then redo our budget policy next year. Just rather than saying we're going to set aside a certain portion every year until we hit that amount, put that in the reserve account, and then next year, just maintain that fund balance at the 25%. So that's the first direction that's needed at this point is a decision from council or consensus from council as to how much to actually put into the fund balance. We're not required to do all 25% this year. So at this point, you're probably looking at maybe only needing to set aside $350,000 in the general fund and on debt.
So what's the relationship between what we established from a budget standpoint? So our budget said, you know, that we allocated $140,000 for that fund. Where does that relate to taking care of the 1.28 million that is listed in this column, reserve required for 25%?
So as of June 30th, the funds had not been transferred into the reserve account.
So we've not done what we said we'd do from a budget standpoint?
No.
Okay. Is there a document? Well, in my view, it's premature to make a decision about how much to allocate other than what we already allocated when we put the budget together, because we don't even know what the budget is and what our needs are. And we've already, what I said, did my simple math, we already have a half a million dollar deficit, and that doesn't include a lot of things that need to get done. In my opinion, it's premature. This, we ought to bring back to the end after we've looked and said, here's what we think our needs are. Here's how much money we've got in reserves. Here's how much we can allocate as you work towards our five-year commitment to get to 25%. That's my view. I don't know if the rest of the council has a different perspective or not, but until we have a budget, kind of hard to make a decision about how to allocate reserves.
Well. Totally respect that view. Normally, the determination of how to use the fund balance is done at the beginning of the budget. Helps to balance the budget and incorporate whatever capital improvements can be incorporated into that. So if you take the numbers and you say, well, this fiscal year's not over, we can still pull $140,000 out and put it into the reserve account. You'd still be looking at maybe pulling out another 140, which takes me back to if you say, well, let's only take out the $280,000 right now and then allocate the rest of that accordingly into the budget. You still may end up with the fund balance at the end of the year if we determine not to fund all the capital improvements.
No, I understand. What's our, if you take all of this and add it up, last year we're at 12.8 roughly million dollars. What, since there's no sheet that adds it all up, what is the current budget that you gave us, what does it add up to? Appointment to the page, because I couldn't find it. I'm slow. I appreciate that. All I saw was the general fund. It does not have a summation for all of the other enterprise funds. They are all listed individually.
Yes, they are.
So what's the total number? Because it's hard to make a decision unless you know what the total, like it looks like.
Well, the reason that they're separate is because they're separately maintained funds.
I understand that. We city council are going to pass the total city budget that made up of the general budget and the enterprise funds and the hot funds. That's what we're going to bless. And all I referred to was back to this report from last year that council approved. And sure enough, right up front, it's got the total number that lists, and it lists all the numbers that walk through it. It walks you through the fiscal policy and the total number. And you go right to page 27. $2.87 million. It lists revenue of the combined budget summary, and that's all I'm looking for.
So I don't have a calculator, so let's, we've got $5 million in general fund, $4 million in water and wastewater, $626 in airport, 1.80 gas.
I'm going to submit, so I'm going to submit, we don't have the number here that we council would do something with unless you want to spend the time to do all the math right now. That's why I say, we ought to go through what you gave us so we can start asking questions about what the basis and assumptions are in this preliminary budget that you gave us, and then add all the numbers up, probably outside of council meeting, because we have a lot of stuff to go through. My sense is, we're already probably going to be here, well past the nine o'clock meeting time limit. But I think, my view, this is a really important element for us to get through, which is where six weeks behind. That's my point. That's why I say, I hold off on projected balance fund. There's no guidance to give at this point. Other council members, are you?
I respectfully disagree. Each fund is separate. Each fund is separate, and so you look at the general fund as the general fund alone. You look at each of the enterprise funds individually. They're not combined. You can't turn around and say, well, we've got, you know, there's a total here of $3.2 million of unallocated fund balance, but it doesn't belong to any one fund and can't really be assigned to any one fund.
So let me give you a specific example. The general fund, which includes streets, you know, streets are part of general fund, are they not?
Yes.
Okay, the street budget right now, you're proposing, is $851,000. It includes an increase in salaries, which is people, 33% over the budget from last year, 67% over what we actually project to spend this year. It includes $0 for street improvements. Zip, not a squat. So at $851,000, it's a 24% downer. It's difficult to go through, on your example of the general fund, until we go through all of the general fund items, get alignment about priorities. And once we do that, then we can have a discussion about what's appropriate to move money over into the reserve account based upon what we think we're going to look at for next year.
Well, I think you need to determine how much you want to set aside in reserve first. How much in compliance do you want to be with the general accounting standards guideline 54 when it comes to reserves?
We have a budget right here. We approved last year. That's what I go with.
So you're already out of compliance because you have not been doing that in the past. So the budget policy that was passed last year was a roadmap to get to compliance.
And what did it say we move over? We're going to say last year we would move over.
It said you have five years to work up into the reserves.
I know. It gave no number in the budget policy document. The budget talked about.
Because it's based on your expenses.
We had a budget last year.
So as your budget changes, that's going to increase your reserve amount. You're obviously not going to put all $1.2 million into a reserve account. So the decision at this point, or the direction at this point, is do you want to make the assumption now, set aside the $280,000, working our way that way, and roll over the rest? Or do you want to roll over more and work with what's left over, which is generally how you work zero budgets?
Tell you what, I've done many, many, many budgets, okay, over the last 40 years, and so have you. We approach it differently. You pick the number right now, use that as a baseline, and we'll come back and adjust it because we're not approving anything tonight. So pick a number.
Okay. Is that there is a question waiting, council field? If you want me to pick a number, I'll pick a number. Normally, the council provides direction on the future and security and stability of the city council, of the city itself financially.
It's difficult to make an assessment. We got this last night at 5:00 PM.
It's easy. There was an electronic version that was sent out.
At 5:15 last night.
This was an update.
5:15 last night.
There was an electronic version that was sent out last week.
Now, would you like me to get the email for you?
Yours might have gotten to you last night. There was an electronic version that went out last week.
To who?
The council members.
Didn't get it? Show me the email. That's another subject. Let's continue on the budget.
Let me go get my email.
Yes, sir. Yep. It's a little harder on this side of the table to read here what's going on. But when are we going to proceed with trying to get it, the final budget? Our next step, as far as I know it, is that we as a council and city manager should get together and go through this with my tooth comb, line item by line item.
So we're going now.
Well, these are your preliminary numbers. So what was emailed to you all last week actually showed a deficit of about $950,000. Went back to the department heads. It had the greatest increase in their budgets from this year to last year. Did that yesterday to make, to bring some of those costs down into something that was a little bit more palatable. And that's what was sent to you yesterday, was the update with that. And again, we're still early in the budget season. We don't get certified values from the central appraisal district until the end of July. So the revenue numbers are going to change by the end of July. Your third quarter numbers from your controller will still come in, and that will make an adjustment to projecting your revenues out, as well as any purchases that are still in limbo between now and then. So those projections are going to change as far as the end-of-year projections. At this point right now, I'm asking council to provide direction with the fund balance so we can roll that over and then see where we stand at that point. Last year, what we did is we took whatever was left over and we put that in the street item. That's what we did.
In our last city council meeting, we had talked about having a special meeting on the budget for tomorrow. And it's like, we could dissect and go item by item, and we could come up with some numbers.
If council wants, I can go back and make, throw a recommended assumed number into a transfer line item for the revenue that will give you an increase in revenue. But as far as addressing these items and the priorities, because when you talk to the department heads, they're all priorities. All their requests are priorities. The police department, working with them, they were able to split their capital improvement request into three years. So we broke it out into three years. The water department kind of went through their budget also, and not only did they agree to not include additional personnel they were asking for, both in both departments, but also agreed to postpone some of their larger ticket items for next year.
Yeah, I recommend us to set some time aside and go item by item, so we can come up with recommendations.
So mayor, we're in violent agreement. We agreed on a schedule, okay, which I've talked to already about when we would do that. Those dates have come and gone. We have by charter an obligation to receive from the city manager 45 days prior to the end of the fiscal year. So the end of fiscal year is, well, start on October. Back up 45 days. Where's that meeting?
It's in July.
Mid-August.
Mid-August. We have one more city council meeting before middle of August. Okay? We have not been successful in getting anywhere near that. I came, I spent eight hours walking through this, through the chart of accounts, to our policy and all that, trying to resolve and work our way through. I don't know why we're not going through it tonight.
It's up to council. But I would like to see every line item, so we can make a proper recommendation.
So did you get the package a week ago?
No, I got it yesterday evening.
You got it yesterday evening. Is there anyone who got the package a week ago?
Did anybody get the email that was sent out last Friday? Two-year Ward 1s, Ward 2s, Ward 3 emails?
I got an email for the city council meeting. This was not included. The only thing that was included was the chart of accounts. This came out. You sent this out separately.
So before you got that one, was the?
Nope.
I got nine on Friday.
You got yours on Friday? You got yours on Friday.
In fact, she also sent mine last night.
Yes.
So my view is, and I know the poor audience is sitting here probably going bored to tears, but we do need to walk through this line by line. If not now, when?
Which one made a recommendation tomorrow?
This is why.